All right, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, October ninth. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernett, and we will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the citizens of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, all nation, all time indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Counselor Trump.
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg.
Present.
Counselor Myers? No, not you. Sukup, thank you.
Present.
Counselor West?
Present.
Counselor Myers is absent, but let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Sukup. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carries. Brings us to the Sheriff's Report, which is on page two of your packet. Our deputy is not present, so I will go ahead. As of October ninth, our forty-three required hours were met with twenty-three calls for service. So if we've got any questions, we can go ahead and send those up. Vicky can help us, so reach out to Vicky if you have any questions. All right, that brings us to citizen comments. We have two types of comments in the city of Albernett. Those four agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. We do ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. So we will start with any comments on agenda-related items. If you're here for Longworth Drainage because it's on the agenda, yes, this is now when you would speak, so.
So I think the question we all have is the comments about the property owners paying for fence removals. I'd like to know what the agreement is. Do we even know what's back there?
So we will discuss that when we get to the agenda item. Yep.
I have comment, Megan Andrews from three oh one Longworth Avenue. I took pictures, I sent them to the city. I don't know if I can share them. Can I share them with you? All I have eight by ten to show you what it looks like when it does rain on this tent, what a backyard is like. Is that possible?
Did we? Vicky, did we put those in a packet?
Yeah, they were.
I think they've been shared with counsel.
Yeah.
Because this has been on the agenda since, oh gosh, almost a year now, I think is when we really started talking about this.
Okay, this is a month ago, my backyard, my neighbor's backyards. You can see, it's pretty bad. And I don't know where the water's coming from, so I appreciate that everyone's looking to fix it. There's a river of water coming from up north. There's a river of water coming from behind T.J. West's house, Alber's fence, so we just look into it, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda-related items? All right, hearing none. Non-agenda-related items.
I think this will be my time to speak. My name is Adam, please have sanitation. I don't know if I'm on the agenda or not, I just wanted to.
You are not, and I'm going to pause your time because I take ownership of, Vicky mentioned that you called.
Yes.
For sure, I'll let you finish your five minutes. Vicky mentioned you called, and I was absolutely supposed to call you and failed to do so, so thank you for joining us tonight. Please continue, and then you and I may also have a follow-up conversation, so.
I'll make it short and sweet. I just wanted to talk to the council about the benefits of a single hauler contract for all the residents of Albernett. I deal with this with cleaners. We find that it saves residents' money on trash collection when you have one company, you know, hopefully it's us, but send out an RFP, you know, for a fair price. It just keeps, we feel like it keeps the town clean. It has all the garbage cans are out on one day, you know, all the trash is collected on one day, plus wear and tear on your streets. You won't have two or three garbage companies coming in and out of your town. It sets you up for services like citywide cleanup, whether that be curbside pickup, residential, like a bulk item drop-off, or that you can bring items to us. Let's see. All with our company, we're a family-owned company, and we have tablets for all of our drivers, so every resident, you know, gets communicated when they're picked up or if they're not picked up. Feels like that helps with issues as to problems with the collection, if there's any. We're able to address it faster and not have, I guess, negative feedback. We've acquired a lot of pounds over the last two or three years, and when they get their toller that we issue, it's a learning curve, but after about two or three months, the residents seem to like it. That helps with garbage collection and keeps the town cleaner. So that's my piece. We can, I look forward to talking to you to see, you know, if we want to get us on the agenda. Talk about writing up an RFP to send out a request for proposal for any garbage hauler around the area, you know, because there's a lot of them, like especially right in this area between us that we're trying to expand into, Rod, ABC, LRS. I feel like you guys would get a very competitive bid if you sent out two bid, and it would save the residents a lot of money. So.
Perfect. Well, thank you for stopping. I will give you a call. I've got some questions around what it looks from the city's standpoint, so I'll be sure to follow up. Yeah, if you could leave me a card, that would be great. So I do own, Vicky definitely passed along the message, and I failed to follow up.
I want to ask you a question.
No, not during public comment.
So. There you go.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other non-agenda-related items? All right, hearing none. That moves us into the mayor's report. Got a couple of things for us. First and foremost, I was going to thank Mayor Pro Tem Myers for covering for me in September, and as part of that, you all approved the hiring of Lee Boland for our part-time city support position, and I just wanted to welcome Lee. I know he's not here tonight, but I've already seen him and Mac out doing some really good work this fall, getting things ready for winter, and so we appreciate that he's here and basically jumped in day one, ready to go with all of his background. So we're thankful to have Lee on board. I do just want to issue a reminder, as we are currently in a political, coming up close to an election, that I would like to remind candidates and residents that all political signs may not be placed in the city right-of-way, in the street right-of-way. There is city code as well as Iowa code that prevents that. So if you are supporting a candidate, which we totally appreciate, please put those on your side of the sidewalk. They cannot be in the city's right-of-way. Counsel, I have a bit of an update that I'm going to come back to a future agenda around the CINTAS agreement. I know we all, you guys approved that several months ago. As we went to execute that, the terms shifted on us a little bit, and we actually don't quite understand where it's at. So I'm trying to schedule a meeting with them, so don't be surprised if that comes back on the agenda. Hopefully by next month, we've got that kind of straightened out. If the price is below what you've already approved, we'll carry forward, but as it's standing right now, that's, we're having a hard time figuring out the calculation, or exactly how they're calculating it. So more to come with CINTAS, but that has not been executed just yet. Within the next thirty days, you will be seeing an update to the city website. Our subscription with WordPress is coming up for renewal, and we're finding that I still have to do a lot of the maintenance, so we're looking at what's going to be an easier website builder, which means that we're going to rebuild that, and it'll be mobile-friendly, very excited. So we will pass that on to counsel when we have the demo site available, in case there's anything you would like to see added. So look forward to that, and we will look for your feedback. Park project update. We're still not on the agenda with that. We did not receive the Transamerica Foundation grant, so we are still waiting to hear back from the REAP grant and, there was two, right? Greater Cedar Rapids Foundation.
So we was hoping to have a surprise first night, but we haven't had anything yet.
So I didn't steal your thunder, that's good.
From DNR last week, that the committee was meeting last weekend, this week. So the decision for the REAP grant should be pretty soon. They wanted to give them a moment to really go through every application and everything, maybe itself is beginning now. So maybe by next meeting, I'll have the decision.
Perfect. So that was maximum of fifty thousand, and then the Greater Cedar Rapids is a maximum of ten thousand. So either way, we're still a little bit short of being able to do the entire project, so I am going to wait until we hear, especially on the DNR, since it's so close, and then we're going to re-engage with H.R. Green to see what we can do to get those phases really squared up so we can get that project started this spring. So hopefully get it out for bid this winter and break ground this spring. So more to come there. Last one I got is our standing item on the nuisance update. We still do have one outstanding nuisance. We are waiting on a ruling in that case. It is currently with the judge, and so more to come there. That is my mayor's report. Next, I will move on to council comments. Counselor West.
Oh, nothing at this time.
Counselor Sukup.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Bozenberg.
Yeah, Mac, I just want to thank you for the job you did on the curbs. You look really good, really good. So it's probably best I've ever seen him. So it's good.
Counselor Trump.
Nothing there.
All right. Brings us to written reports. We will start with the Fire Department and recognize Chief West and his medical officer and her trusty sidekick. That's you, that's you. Anything you want to highlight, T.J.?
We had a lot of kids at the station that day. What, a hundred and?
We had eighty from kindergarten.
Yeah.
Oh, Fire Safety Awareness Week.
Yeah.
From first grade and actually forty-five, because they seemed to come.
They multiply.
Yes, and then second grade, we had fifty, fifty-five. And that group, so the first group with the baby just filled us all up. A lot of kids, or just the four of us there. It was a bit busy today, we'll put it that way. We've had a lot of calls in the last month, tons of calls. We have another PR coming up on next Tuesday from Collins Aerospace Day Academy. They're coming out to tour the station, so we'll be doing a PR event for them. Looking forward to Halloween. And I think on here, the chief said that we got the eight E's in. So we're up and running with the new eight E's at this point. The rest I'll let the chief talk about.
Well, we got the Fire Office sub grant, because I put in there quite largely.
Bolden.
Bolden, capitalized the whole thing. So it's for the fifteen radios, ten radio cases, rugged speaker mics, which are fire-rated ones. So since we're going to mainly have them under the filter in the pockets, that's the only thing that's really going to be exposed. So that's an upgrade on it. And then six bay routers and a six bay charger. And the only thing is, there's a volunteer fire assistance program that's coming up with the DNR that we like to get, some foam packs that will help with field fires, house fires that catch the lawns on fire. If we have to land lifeguard, we can use those as well. So it's kind of a multipurpose grant and be a fifty-fifty match, so.
Perfect, we do have that as an agenda item.
Yep, so. I think that, when you say we've just been.
Extremely busy.
Extremely busy.
Any questions for Fire Department?
Think about putting a bed in there.
Not on top of football standby and everything else, so. We appreciate everything you, I know you've been busy. How's response been? You've got enough, were able to man all the trucks and respond to everything? Wonderful.
Doing good, always looking for more people, yes.
Do you bring applications with you? Just start handing them out with agendas? All right, nothing for Fire Department? Thank you very much. Moves us to Public Works, page four of your packet. And I'll hand it over to Mac.
Just one thing to add, the new backup generator at the smallest station got finished up this week, so that is up and running. All of our infrastructure is backup generated now. Could have it up and gone. That's all I have to add.
Any questions for Mac? Are you, so you've got your one certification. I know you're working on your other one. Are you looking for, do you have to, when do you have to start continuing credits to maintain that?
Anytime. I have from July one to, it's two-year cycle.
Okay, I guess that was my question.
Yeah. Not this July, the following July to get, start getting.
Get all those bagged up. Any questions for Mac? All right, that brings us to City Clerk Treasury. We'll recognize Vicky, we are on page five.
The only thing I wanted to call out was I added, so when I was closing out September, part of the process of going back to make sure that August was still closed out, and it was not, due to some transactions that happened after I closed. That's why there's new reports, a new packet full of August, because for, oh, you had to review that and re-approve, at least make no, or know that you've been presented with the updated numbers. So in last one's packet, the net income line was not zeroed out. I mean, it did zero out when I closed it, but I didn't look at that when I went to print the reports for the meeting. So when I went to do September, then I noticed the number had repopulated, so I was on a meeting with Clerk Bowsen, we have that all zeroed out now, so that should be all taken care of.
Perfect. Look like we were trending just fine. We're running ten to thirty percent. Looks like we're trending fine within each of our buckets. Any questions for Vicky? One thing I will ask counsel while we're on this action item is be thinking about next year's budget. Crazy, but we usually start in November, which is right around the corner. So be thinking if we've got any projects that we want to make sure we include there. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which starts on page eleven, I believe. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by West, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukup. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, new business. Item A, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one, resolution naming depositories. That is on page fifteen of your packet. So this is in regards to, and I will probably let Vicky speak to it a little bit more, but we had IPATE come in, we approved the agreement with IPATE, and so we wanted to update our depositories to be able to put money with them. Vicky did provide me with a letter where it's not necessary because they're not technically a bank. There, it's an investment, but just to make sure we're all on the same page, I didn't think it hurt to address it this way with a resolution to make sure it's recorded appropriately, so.
I know the number five, it looks a little optimistic, but I just want to make sure that it was high enough once our investments start giving us money to.
Any questions, concerns? All right, I will go ahead and read Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one, naming depositories. Whereas the city of Albernett is required to approve financial institutions as depository as of public funds for a public body by written resolution, and that resolution shall distinctly name each depository approved and specify the maximum amount that may be kept on deposit in each depository. Whereas the city clerk and/or treasurer is hereby authorized to deposit the city of Albernett's funds in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution as set below. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa approves the following list of financial institutions to be depositories of the city of Albernett funds in conformance with all applicable provisions of the Iowa Code and investment policy of the city of Albernett. So we've got Farmer State Bank with a maximum of deposit of two million two hundred and fifty thousand, and IPATE with a maximum deposit of five million. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one?
Make motion, we approve Resolution ten days twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
Motion by Bozenberg, do I have a second? Second by Trump. I'm going to do that as roll call. Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Sukup?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh two, approving the FY twenty-five annual financial report. We do have, is this the one that has to be published? Is that, so we've got proof of publication? Anything you would add here, Vicky? Anything of note? Any questions from counsel? Hearing none, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh two, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, whereas chapter three eighty-four dot twenty-two of the Code of Iowa requires all Iowa cities to publish and file an annual financial report no later than December one of each year, and whereas the city clerk of the city of Albernett, Iowa has completed the annual financial report and recommends its submission upon review of the city of Albernett City Council, now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa that the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five attached here to as Exhibit A is hereby approved. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh two?
So moved.
Moved by Trump, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukup. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. That brings us to page number twenty-nine. Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh three, approving the annual street financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Vicky, anything of note? This one does not have to be published, right? Just the, just the financial report? Anything of note? We didn't have any major projects, so it's a lot the same as last year.
It was a lot similar to last year.
Any questions from counsel? Hearing none, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh three, approving the annual street financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, whereas chapter three twelve dot fourteen of the Code of Iowa requires all cities to file an annual street financial report to the Iowa Department of Transportation no later than December one of each year, whereas the city clerk of the city of Albernett has completed the annual street financial report and recommends its submission upon review of the city of Albernett City Council. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa that the annual street financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five attached here to as Exhibit A is hereby approved. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh three?
So moved.
Moved by Trump, do I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. One more. Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh four, approving the FY twenty-four to twenty-five urban renewal report. That you will find on page thirty-seven. And is this just as long as we have TIF or as long as we have an active urban renewal district?
Oh, no, it's active.
Okay, so even when we're done making the TIF payments? Okay. But really, that's the only thing that we have in there, so. Any questions from counsel? Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh four, approving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, whereas chapters three thirty-one dot four oh three subsection three, three fifty-seven H dot nine subsection two, and three eighty-four dot twenty-two subsection two, as amended by HF two four six zero, the Urban Renewal Reporting Act of twenty twenty-twelve of the Code of Iowa, requires all Iowa cities, counties, and rural improvement zones with active urban renewal areas provide specific information concerning active urban renewal areas and any associated tax incremental financing districts by filing an annual urban renewal report no later than December one of each year, whereas the city clerk of the city of Albernett has completed the annual renewal report and recommends its submission upon review of the city of Albernett City Council. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa that the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty-five attached here to as Exhibit A is hereby approved. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh four?
So moved.
Moved by Sukup, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by West, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right. Let's do something other than reports, shall we? Page forty-eight, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh five, adopting the council action policy. So where this came from, hopefully you had a chance to review it, is every month I help Vicky prepare for the meeting, and we occasionally, depends on what we've got going on, have to make judgment calls on, do we need a resolution for that? Can we just do a motion? And I'm one that's, I just, I like doing things consistently and having rhyme or reason to why we did it one way, and we keep doing it that way. And so developed the council action policy, which is just that. It just gives us those guidelines on when a motion is sufficient. It highlights when a resolution is either, A, required by Iowa Code, which there are some situations where we have to do a resolution, like we just did with the annual financial report. And then there are just other times that for the cities, for the benefit of our business, it's good to have it as a resolution because it just solidifies that record. It makes it a permanent record, basically. So that is what this is. But because it's a policy, and in accordance with the policy that's being written, any policies would be approved by resolution, so. Any questions on this? And we can, we can learn from it, grow with it. This is just kind of a first pass, but it's better than, we do a lot of judgment calling right now. All right, hearing none. Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh five, adopting the council action policy. Whereas the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa recognizes the need for clear procedures regarding council actions. Whereas the council desires to ensure consistent, efficient, and legally compliant use of motions, resolutions, and ordinances in the conduct of city business. Whereas the council has reviewed the proposed council action policy, which provides guidance on when's council action should be taken by motion, resolution, or ordinance. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa that, one, the council action policy, motions, resolutions, and ordinances attached here to as Exhibit A is hereby adopted, superseding any prior policies or practices on this subject. All city council members, the mayor, and city staff are directed to follow the procedures set forth in the policy in conducting city business, and the resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh five?
So moved.
Moved by Trump, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six, approving the plat of P&amp;G Estates addition to the city of Albernett, Lynn County, Iowa. So that resolution is on page fifty-one, and then details of the plat are on subsequent pages. So this is the property just south of town that just sold. There are two houses. And then the farm fields, they're looking to split the houses off so they are separate from the farm field. We did ensure, because when that property changed hands, the one of the farmhouses, the one further south, was on. That property changed hands, the, one of the farmhouses, the one for the south was on a septic that did not pass inspection. And so they moved that to city sewer. But they chose to run a private line. Down to the connection south rather than, the closest connection was, they would have had to bore under Main Street, so they ran it south. So it runs. Acrossed. This new property that they are looking to split, so we did ensure that there is a permanent easement for the private sewer connection. So you will see that, page fifty-four. Um, this did not go to planning and zoning because there is no improvement being accepted by the city. So even though it is within city limits, it does not require any review by planning and zoning. Any questions? Alright, hearing none, resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh six approving plat of P and G Estates addition to the city of Albernett Lynn County, Iowa. Whereas a plat of P and G Estates addition to the city of Albernett Lynn County, Iowa containing one lot has been filed with the city clerk. And after consideration of the same is found to be correct and in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Iowa and the ordinances of the city of Albernett Iowa. In relation to plats and additions to cities. Now therefore it be resolved by the city council of the city of Albernett Iowa that said plat of said P and G Estates addition to the city of Albernett Lynn County, Iowa. Be and the same is hereby acknowledged and approved. On the part of the city of Albernett Iowa and the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to certify this resolution. Of approval and affix the same to said plat as provided. Do I have a motion to approve resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh six? Moved by Sukup, do I have a second? Second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Oppose nay? Motion carries. Eleven G Volunteer Fire Assistance Program Grant through the DNR application, this is on page fifty-nine of your packet. I'm going to recognize Chief West on this one. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, um, kinda like I put in my end of the report, just um. Additional equipment that'll help us and mutually departments. Uh, protecting wildfires or any, any field fires, vegetation fires, but very more efficiently.
And we've received this grant previously, I think we got chainsaws.
Uh, well, we got chainsaws, hose line, um, and a few other things last year. And they changed it, um, normally once you get a grant, you get away a year or two, but they're giving a priority to recent recipients, so. For, jump on it and see what happens, so, um, a lot of this is, um, just more protective measures for us. And then be able to put up fire quickly and more efficient.
Sounds good, and it's through. It's, it's more forestry related, so this would be equipment specific to like brush fires. Forest type fires, yeah. Any other questions? So according to our new council action policy. Applying for grants can be done with a motion, so I did have Vicky not put this in a resolution. We will going forward do resolutions to accept. Any grants, we've not done that historically, but it creates that, um. That record and action on our side that we accepted that money and especially with this being a fifty fifty match, that is the point where council will then approve. Yes, we'll accept X amount and we'll match X amount, so we'll make sure, once we hear, that that resolution is included in that packet.
Um, the one thing, um, I would like to add, there's a, where it says special request. Um, on page sixty, it says three hundred dollars, that's for brackets to hold the foam containers in. So it's not listed throughout their breakdown, so we just put under the special request.
Any questions? And then is page sixty-one, is that just, that's where you got the quotes?
Yes, yep. And they're a company that we've worked with for a lot of our. Fire gear and tools, so.
I would seek a motion to approve the Volunteer Fire Assistant Program Grant through the DNR, the application for that. In the amount of. Three thousand fifty-six dollars. Moved by Sukup, do I have a second? Second by Trump, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Oppose nay? That motion carries. Alright, uh, old business, item A, trick or treat, date and time. So we were ahead of the game and we totally did this on the last meeting, so that's why it's in old business. And then I got notified from the school, um, that for the first time in eleven years. First of all, Halloween falls on a Friday, it happens to be the first football playoff game. I did confirm today that we are guaranteed first round, so there will be a football game that night, we don't know where or against who. Um, and then likewise, if we were to look at October thirtieth, which is the day before on Thursday. That is parent teacher conferences, and so there will be happenings at the school. So pleasure of the council with how you would like to schedule. Trick or treat, feels a little weird to have it in November, but that is, you know, obviously that would be Saturday, so I've not heard of anything. Extraordinary happening on Saturday. But, or we can leave it the same.
We'll get to that one bit.
Right.
The end of the ballgame will probably be here.
He would, he would neither confirm nor deny that when I talk to him, so.
I'm just saying, it's probably.
Regardless, our community is pretty good about traveling, so like even if it's not here, I don't imagine there'll be many porch lights on, so. Yeah, sorry, I, I, I received that after the meeting, so. Alright, my, my trusty sidekick at the school, Stacy McClintock passed that over to me, so.
I move, we have. Trick or treat on Saturday, November first, five seventy P M.
I've got a motion by Trump.
And. And it'd be widely publicized on the webs, the webpage with the reasoning.
I love that, so motion by Trump to have trick or treat on Saturday, November first from five to seven P M. With publication of the date, time and reason for change. Do I have a second? Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Oppose nay? Motion carries. Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, accepting awarding bid received for construction services related to Longworth Drainage Project. Um, so you have in front of you, we did ask MSA to put this out for bid. As we discussed at our August meeting. I was a little skeptical around their pricing, just because I know it's a tight space. And so we did put this out to bid to get a realistic idea of what that would look like. Honestly, with where it's come in, we would have to get creative with budget, uh, to make this happen. And then I do also wanna share, oh, so we, we did, we only received, not only, we received one quote. In response to the RFP. Since then, I also did have an opportunity and I do, I own my outcomes, probably should have had some of these conversations ahead of time. But I did have a conversation about the easement in particular. I was under the impression, we learn as we go, right? We learn new things every day, that an easement was an easement. And now I do know that it may just be a utility easement, in which case the city has no right to. So I think we need to maybe do a little more research, uh, to the point about.
As far as you actually getting easements in place so you can do something there.
You really, yeah, do we even have any ownership of the easement that's back there for drainage, or is it purely? Utilities. I'm gonna be honest, I didn't realize there, it, it makes sense now that it's been said out loud, but I just, easement is easement. And then it also came to my attention, so we are all, there, there's understanding, cause this has come to council before. That there was a tile back there, may have been compromised, whole thing, we kinda went. You know, doesn't super matter, our ordinance states that the city is to provide drainage facilities. That was not, it's, I now know that was not declared on any abstracts. And so I don't know if that changes anything as far as. Cities, I, I, I think we need legal opinion at this point, if.
I wanna clarify what I just thought I heard, it, it's not in their abstract that we provide drainage.
It's not in their abstract that the drainage tile existed or was even there.
Hmm, you're small work.
I, I think this is, it's a good starting point for us to kinda know where this is gonna fall, like I said, we've also gotta do some. Creative budgeting to see if.
Explain creative budgeting.
Well, so we've got right now in stor, cause this would have to come out of stormwater. So in stormwater reserve, we've got seventy-eight thousand. We've looked for some grants, but because it's not conservation, there are not a lot of grants available. To help with something like this, so the bid came in at a hundred and three thousand three hundred and eighty.
And that includes fencing, you're like, I, I, yeah. The discussion about owners doing some fencing.
So that, where that came from, I'm gonna own, I'm gonna be honest, is my understanding that there was awareness of the easement. And if fences were placed within that easement, it was a discussion that we could have. Now knowing that.
It's a utility.
If it was a utility easement, then that would not. Then apply to the city maintaining the three feet off of that, so. That is where that came from.
I think we need some legal counsel.
I think we need some legal counsel on this, but now we have a, a, a number to start from. Um, I also, for something this large, would have liked to see more than one quote come in. I know you two usually abstain, but any? Further?
Would it be, um, could I see your photos again? I know it gets, I know the world gets wet around here when it rains a lot, so I'd like to see your.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I mean, it does turn into a pretty swamp area back there. Even for quarter inch, inch of rain. It'll. Flood up pretty good.
Well, and I was gonna check with Mac also, I did not, excuse me, have an opportunity to do that this week. Uh, HR Green just finished mapping the storm sewers and I'm nearly certain there's nothing on. Longworth. Is there on, we can look at it, I, I would also like to look at what storm water utilities were made available. I think it's all on the other side of Longworth, so. You two are, you two are familiar, there's like, we know, so.
Sean over two on Main Longworth Avenue.
So, I actually was gonna say, we don't usually take comment, but you are all here, so I was.
Get a request if we can open up, open up the floor to have.
I was, I was.
Comment on this because obviously there's a lot of us that wanna.
I was going to do just that because I know you're here for good intent. Yes, yes, I'm okay with that, I would still say if we can keep comments limited, so I'm, I will turn on our timer if you don't mind that.
So. Sean and Justin over two on Main Longworth Avenue. So my question is, obviously this has been on the agenda for several months.
Yes.
What is the actual scope of? The bid that went out, so the scope of, of work, what, what was actually gonna be done?
So there. Great question, um, I do also wanna say we, we would not have started this without having a hearing with all of the affected property owners. But the work is, it's a, I also think, again, I talked to someone with some familiarity and it might be overkill. But a twelve inch tile with surface inlets to help drain the water all along the. Is what's been designed. Is that correct, Mac? Was it eight? Okay.
With twelve inch, fifteen inch intakes.
Maybe that's where I got the, the twelve inch.
Like the salt was eight.
Okay.
And I forget how many, I forget how many surface intakes there were, but.
Looks like eight, yeah.
Fifteen inch.
And so the scope of the bid that was sent out and. Was. How were the fences gonna be dealt with in that specific bid, were, were the city, is the city going to? Uh, absorb the cost of our fences, if the fences need to be moved and put back in place? Or are the, at, at, in this juncture in this bid, are the homeowners responsible for that cost?
So in the bid, it is, it is a line item, so it is in the one hundred and three thousand three hundred and eighty that the city would have approved. That cost would have come to us, household would have had the decision if they wanted to pass that on. So similarly, um, I'm gonna pause your timer, cause I'm responding, uh, like when we do sidewalk projects. The homeowners can work with the city, the city will hire the contractor, get a cheaper rate. And, but then the homeowner is responsible for the actual cost of that sidewalk, so we, we've, we've done similar arrangements. It was an option that was thrown out again, particularly if that easement had been encroached. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so it sounds like, and I just wanna make sure I understood that. It sounds like the cost of any removal of fences or. The reinstallation of offenses would be on the city. The city would be doing, would be absorbing that cost.
It's included in the scope of work, and again, the city could have determined if that was the homeowner's responsibility, had it encroached in a known easement. So that's what we need to still determine is how that easement's documented, if city has any ownership and what that looks like. So currently, just again, for information, cause it's public record, you can definitely request this. The removal and reinstallation of existing fence came in at nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, so of the hundred and three thousand.
And is, since I still have this.
Speak, the talking stick.
There was only one. Bid that came in, what, what was the, the overall, can we, what was the overall cost of the project?
What was projected by?
And one, they only had one person, one company bid on.
Here Stobin is the only bid that we received, uh, we put this out, MSA put it out. Um, if you'll allow me just a moment to get back to my. August packet, cause I was not here in September, I can look at what their estimate was. Their estimate was a little choppier because they didn't even include. Bonn, I guess that's not. This does not include if we needed construction easements and any of the. Legal costs with that. Feel bear with me, I'll try to get to the end of my packet here. They estimated total cost at ninety-eight thousand, so it came in above estimate. I mean, actually pretty, kinda pretty close for where they're at.
Speaking on, for Justine and I, we're definitely okay with work happening back in that easement, in fact. Seven years later, I think it's great that the city was come up with funds to actually. Get the work done. So I'm hoping when you, the council. Receives legal. Advice, that the legal advice would be that the city is able to continue this project, that's what our opinion is. However, we do not wanna incur any cost at all, because it shouldn't be any, I mean, it just shouldn't be. Our feelings are it shouldn't be on us as a homeowner to pay for anything back there. I mean, in fact, seven years ago, when we were denied the help from the city, I dug my own trench. And since then, we haven't had any issues. Um, and I know that maybe people up river. Um, and I know that maybe people uprivered for me. And that's not anything I have to think that I've done, but you know, we've settled our own issue with a little hard work, sweat, and some blood. So, but I, I, I applaud the city for coming up with the funding and, and.
I don't know about that, so where we've, where we've been, uh, is we in reading through our ordinance, there is a city ordinance that, as part of a subdivision, that drainage facilities must be provided. However, many, many moons ago, what, twenty years ago now, city accepted responsibility for that subdivision. So, it's our responsibility to provide the drainage facilities. To this point, and council, feel free to jump in and correct me, I would say it's been exploratory. Um, because this is not something, it's, it's not currently budgeted, we would have to do a budget amendment. So, it's not work we're necessarily planning on, um, but we do have some reserve, reserve funds that have to go towards stormwater, we don't generally have a lot of stormwater projects, um, so. I, I wouldn't maybe say that we have all of it, but we, we have done the exploration of what would this take, what, what even is a solution, because until we engineer this out, we didn't even know what would be possible, so.
I have, I do have one more request too, if, if the city does go ahead and, and obtain the funds and completes the project. Uh, it would be my recommendation that the city then also maintain that, that easement, and, and any work that needs to be done for maintenance wise, because there would be, uh, you know, who knows what's gonna happen as far as down the road, as far as maintenance items, um. You know, there's, the, the city, I believe, did the work on, um, on Roosevelt, and that drainage system, and quite honestly, it doesn't look very good. And so, the city council members, and the city should look at not only the project itself, but maintaining those things after the fact that they, when they go in. So, that could be an additional cost that could go into the bid when it goes out. Just a recommendation.
Oh, for maintenance? We would do that in-house.
Well, it's just something to keep in mind, because these things, they, they, they're great when they go in. And then, five, ten years down the road, you know, things happen, nature happens.
So, this should be mostly underground, it would just be the inlets, um, that would be visible.
Who's gonna clean out the inlets, who's gonna maintain that in the spring, and then in the wintertime, you know, ice melt, snow melt. Making sure that that's clear to breathe. So, there are things that the city should think about.
Taking away your talking stick. Anyone else? I did, I took a. Evening deputy. How are you? That's all right, we always appreciate you coming. Go right ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, apologies, uh, looks like this period, nine eleven through ten nine. Uh, town hours were met, twenty-three calls for service. Uh, anything on this report that stands out, or any questions, comments, concerns for neutral?
I don't think so. Appreciate, we did just set, and we'll, we'll send a follow-up email, we did just set our trick or treat for Saturday, November first, and so. We'll send an email, just to make sure you're aware. Thank you.
Good care, thanks.
Justin Means, uh, three seventeen Willow Street, how many houses does this affect?
He would ask me a question. Doesn't, right, six ninety? Give me your address again.
Three seventeen Willow Street.
It's chugging. We'll go off the assumption, it's, it's about a dozen.
Now, how many of those homes are we thinking have fences, and how many don't?
I think there's only one property that doesn't. So, the other advice that I was given, um, that I would like to talk to our engineer about, is, uh, they've seen where it is. See, we've got one. We count the Howard Street properties that are immediate to this easement, there's one, two, three, four, five, six that do not have fences. There are one, two, three, seven that do.
Okay, and are we considering the two houses on the furthest south of that stretch? Even though the tile is on the north edge of their property?
Say that again.
So, there's a tile that Sean and I, we're backyard neighbors, and at our property lines on the south side, we're the second house to the north, there is a tile that starts at the north end of their properties, and on the south end of ours. So, it really doesn't even affect those.
But the sewer intake is across their property, so I don't, I'd have to look at the plans again to see if theirs is impacted. If it would go, if they'd have to re-engineer all that's through there. To get to the storm sewer, cause it's just south of there. Of that easement, is the intake.
Now, uh, with a utility easement, have you looked and seen generally how big one of those is? The width?
I've not, so our ordinance, um, which I know, according to Lynn County's assessor site, the easement back there is about five feet, right now, the existing one. Our ordinance does call for a drainage easement of ten feet, so, it would, but that's why I'm like, we, we just need legal opinion on that. Oh, so what I was gonna say, I did receive advice that they have, and I wanna check with our engineer, they have seen where they put the cost of fence removal on the contractor. Because then they do their darndest to not have to remove fences, so I need to check if that's an option as well. Yes, sir.
Ryan Christensen, two eleven Longworth, on that easement, is that from the property line? Or, so is it, if it's, let's say it's six feet, is it three feet, three feet either side of the property line? Or five feet either side, or is it five feet, so it's actually a ten-foot easement, five feet each side?
It's five feet total, so I think it, or six-ish feet, we'll call it three feet on either side. It's not ten total, cause we definitely looked at it, did not meet true requirements for what clearly was not engineered according to ordinance and spec. The long story, the short of that story is, the city accepted responsibility for it, so this is just kinda where we're at, um, so yeah, it, it is not the full ten feet.
But even, right, but it's from the center line.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Uh, Nate Reel, uh, three fifteen Willow, also speak on behalf of my wife, uh, Christina there. Uh, we're wondering, uh, as far, well, based on some of the things you were saying there, is it possible that as you set up your fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, that possibly there would be the ability to allocate more funds in the twenty twenty-six budget?
So, that's a great question. We don't get a ton of stormwater revenue. If you'll, if you've ever looked at your bill, we chose two dollars and fifty cents for stormwater, so, we don't generate a ton of revenue, um, so. It's mainly gonna have to come from fund balance. Uh, I want, we could look at if, like, local option sales tax or something like that, cause I think that can go towards infrastructure, right? We would have to look.
It's earmarked for something.
I think fifty percent is property tax relief, and I'm nearly certain the other fifty percent is infrastructure. So, we, we may, we may have.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, would it be nice to have it done soon? Yes, but I mean, I've been there two years now. And it, I mean, I bought the house knowing what it was, you know, and what was going on there, uh. It would definitely be beneficial, but if we move this into uh, point where there could be a larger budget. You know, we've waited, what, you say, seven years? What, before, yeah, um. What, instead of doing it, say, right now, let's another six months, you know?
I just don't think we'll gain as much as. I mean, we can look at what our stormwater revenue is, but it's not a lot.
Yeah, okay, understood.
It's a good thought, though. Any else? All right.
So, why don't you summarize where we are right now?
Well, for, I was also gonna start with, I can't even ask for a motion, cause I don't have the quorum that I need, and I didn't consider that when Counselor Myers let me know that he was not gonna be here tonight. So, this one, um, it's gonna.
Why don't we recap?
It's gonna have to table anyway, but yes, I would like, and so, regardless of the resolution. Gosh, can I, can I even, I don't think I need a motion, but I would like to follow up with the city attorney, as well as the engineer, on the legalities of the easement. If there's any I don't know if repercussion's the right word, but any.
How that impacts this potential project.
Yes, the current easement, as well as the, um, abstracts, is that the right word?
Yeah, there are, well, I don't think we need to worry about their abstracts, we need to figure out where we are, and how, how that, eh, uh, easement or lack of easement for drainage way affects us. They can update your own abstract.
But if it wasn't declared on their abstracts, then as far as the, like, the, the encroachment.
We'll have to determine if those easements are actually there. I mean, the, whoever drew up the abstract should have found those things, that's not our.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
So, yes, I'm gonna follow up with the city attorney on the legalities of the easement, and with engineer for the potential to look at deferring the cost of moving fences to the contractor. And see if they've ever seen that done. Or anything else?
We just need to talk to them.
I think, I think we're there, like I said, this has been exploratory to see if it could be solved, what it would take, and so, we'll, we'll keep plugging away at it. Keep digging, it's, I think it's been a year, I think October or November of last year is when this first hit our radar, so. Well, I, I realize it's not, you guys have been dealing with this a long time, but. All right, I don't need a motion for any of that, do I? I don't think so. All right, so we will come back to resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, hopefully I have an update next month. So, um, I do appreciate you all being here, I always love having a crowd at our meetings, we do record and post them on YouTube as well, so, if you ever, if you can't make it, feel free to, to watch them there, or holler at me ahead of time, and we can talk through it. All right, old business twelve C, ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one, amending chapter one sixty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Auburn, Iowa, relating to accessory buildings in residential districts. This is our final reading. So, ordinance is on page sixty-seven of your packet. Any questions? I'm not reading this one, cause we've already read it twice.
The highlights of this is, what, the maximum size of, uh, size or height, which is it?
Both, so we are increasing the maximum size for accessory buildings in residential areas. But we are decreasing the maximum height for accessory, accessory buildings in residential areas, in addition to adding a whole bunch of definitions that should have otherwise existed. Uh, we are limiting to one accessory building per lot within residential. See, what else did we change? Must be five feet from the principal building, it's currently three. And cannot occupy more than thirty percent of the square footage of the rear yard, currently that is forty percent, we are reducing that to thirty percent. Any questions from councils? I would seek a motion to approve ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one, amending chapter one sixty-five of the Code of Ordinances of, of the City of Auburn, Iowa, related to accessory buildings in residential districts, for the final reading. Moved by Trump, do I have a second? Second by West. Roll call, Counselor West. Counselor Sukup. Counselor Bosenberg. Counselor Trump. That motion carries. All right, hang on, cause I think we need one more. I'm gonna make y'all do it, just to cover our bases. Do I have a motion to approve the final reading passage and adoption with respect to ordinance number oh eight dash twenty twenty-five dash oh one. Moved by Trump, do I have a second? Second by Bosenberg, any further discussion? Counselor Trump? Counselor Bosenberg? Counselor Sukup? Counselor West? That motion carries, that is final. We can put both of those in the minutes, cause I think I probably only needed one. All right, final comments, Counselor Trump. Counselor Bosenberg. Counselor Sukup. Counselor West? All right, with that, we'll confirm the date and time of our next meeting is November thirteenth at seven P M, and do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Sukup, do I have a second? Second by West, all those in favor? Oppose, nay? Motion carries, we are adjourned at eight oh seven P M. Thank you all for coming.